November 13th meeting of the planning commission will come to order. Please call the roll.
Martin.
Here.
Middleton.
Here.
Bruno.
Here.
Gillum.
Here.
Knight.
First item is approval of the October minutes. Have you all read them?
motion to approve.
Second. Call the roll.
Martin.
Aye.
Middleton.
Aye.
Bruno.
Aye.
Gillum.
Aye.
Knight.
Aye.
First item. Oh. Approval of the agenda. Is there, are there any additions to the agenda? I'm gonna add one thing, a quick discussion under old business about the zoning map and presentation to the city council. We'll do that after the small cell tower.
Okay.
The agenda will then stand.
Need to call the roll?
No.
Okay. A rezoning to PUD and approval of a zoning plan for lot 1RJS 107, commercial addition, half plus marler agent.
James?
So this is a, the request is for PUD rezoning. The current property is vacant. Current zone is C3. It's auto sales to the north. Also adjacent with some adjacent residential, you can see that very northwest portion of the yellow line up there, that's the auto sales. And then there's three single family homes along the north there. C3 to the southwest, Highway 107 and Maryland intersection, C2 and R1 to the west across Highway 107. Actually, it's probably easier to see that on this map right here. Coding on the zoning. On the land use plan, it indicates the property for street development, which in this area would be C3, as well as a single family residential is what's indicated. Request, the site contains 4.46 acres. So this is intended to accommodate a self-storage facility with multiple structures on site. Applicant has also proposed an increase in allowable building coverage, normal zoning for 35%, 40, 45, 46% part of the PUD. But this is being done to accommodate a self-storage facility, a fortress type self-storage. Did the wrong comment on there? Somehow copied the wrong, wrong one. You all note in your report on here with this, one of the first things that we had as a, as a question, I apologize, I accidentally copied the wrong, wrong report here. I copied it over. We had asked that, that one of the things that's part of the PUD process is for the applicant to indicate the density of development. Typically with a commercial development, that would be expressed as building lot coverage. With this, we're using what we call floor area ratio, which basically two-story structure and has 35% lot coverage, then the FAR would be 0.7. Floor area, different way to express density. That actually indicates how dense out of development it is. So this, the FAR, floor area ratio is 0.46, which is 46% lot coverage. This is compared to the 35%. We needed some information on the percentage of window glazing door coverage on the front facades of the building. The proposed designs that they have do conform to the building design standards. So this is one aspect of the, of PUD that is more stringent than the normal building design standards. There's glazing, glazing standards that are for that, essentially for front building facades. Our requirement that maintain appearance of having some sort of storefront, which you could tell from what the applicant has proposed, even despite the fact that along 107, this is a self-storage facility. It maintains the appearance of being very similar to a retail center. Done up with mock glazing so that it appears that there's storefronts there. So there's just one. But all of the, all of the facades that they provided exceed that, that 20% glazing requirement, which is above and beyond what the building plans are normally outside of the We had asked if they provide a more narrative description on how the, how the faces comply with the building standards. Essentially, they gave us some materials list, materials. They incorporate multiple materials, which were things that, that are required. And then in the areas where they, where we don't have sort of a, what I would, what I would say is sort of a disruption in massive structure. So you're required every 100 feet to have some sort of articulation where there's either recess in the building or part of it that gets out and a breakup to visually how it's structured. What they chose to do with this is to actually, actually make those portions structure now. So they look even more like sort of entry. But in the areas where that was not done, coursing of materials are contained. We had asked that they give us information about how it's, how the use is substantially similar compatible with the property. The applicant stated that because the property is currently zoned C3 and our development is allowed in C3 under a conditional PUD conforms to with the zone in which it's addressed. The PUD is allowed under conditional use with existing zoning and system general character of the city land use plan, which based upon our findings, given that this is now a conditional use of C3 and this area is indicated for C3 uses, this is generally consistent with the land use plan. And then the applicant states this is, PUD is also substantially similar to compatible with adjacent property. Office building, it's in the south, car lot is in the fourth, horticultural nursery with open display, tennis office and church are all to it. So there's a, quite a bit of mix of different uses, most of which generate more traffic. Most of which have sort of higher external, negative, higher external impacts. So it is, it is substantial somewhere. For the landscaping calculation, so the ask to the applicant to strive to meet the intent of what the landscape regulations are, landscape calculations. So in their, their package that they sent on Friday with the information that you have, they demonstrated that they substantially met what those landscape requirements are. There is one area where they couldn't quite fit all of the plantings needed to, but there's another area where they went above and beyond what your landscaping part. So those two things, I think in a lot of ways. So overall, in terms of looking at consistency with the land use plan, again, staff use this as, as being, since it is the area is on C3 and it's indicated for C3, that this causal is consistent with the plan. Also reviewing and looking at consistency with approval standards. So the planning commission to approve a PUD must find certain things to support, support that approval. The first of which is being that the PUD provides public benefits that would not be achievable through, through the normal zoning regulations. So this site could alternatively be approved as a, as a conditional use under a C3 zoning. But there are some benefits that are achieved with the first is that the, I think first and foremost is PUD requires stronger building standards than within the So all of the glazing on Highway 107, that's, that is a result of the design standards. So the, sort of the aesthetic appearance, the architectural appearance of the, of the actual use, the result of the regulations. That's, that's one area where it provides a public benefit. PUD regulations allow for the use of fortress style, while this style results in a higher lot coverage, which is one of the reasons why the applicant requested 46% rather than 35%. It allows the site to appear like a masonry wall to the exterior, which for adjacent residential, that's kind of a common things. Have a masonry wall fencing in an entire residential area, often a common thing. So it, it's something that doesn't necessarily create a disruptive, disruptive here. And also the fact that that masonry wall exists as the back edge doesn't mean that's actually part of this. It provides some So often subdivisions, adjacent subdivisions, see this as a visual improvement. With many developments often surrounded by masonry walls. Additionally, the development provides a 20-foot undisturbed buffer along its north property line. So that is the area, if you look in the report, where you've got eight Cardinal Lane, 10 Cardinal Lane, 12 Cardinal Lane, part of 14 Cardinal Lane that are adjacent, so that that undisturbed buffer will allow it to grow up some people or heavily edging. So that, that will provide some level. The site will also include micracks as amenity, and the site will include architectural fencing, which would not otherwise be required. So that's the first requirement. The second is, is regarding adequate public utilities. Utilities are adjacent to the site. Second being, third being that the development would not impose substantial negative internal impacts on or prevent the orderly development of adjacent property. Staff found that based on the submitted plans, the development will be high quality. It's not anticipated the development will create substantial negative impacts on the adjacent property or discourage the development of adjacent property. Careful attention should be paid during the review phase to the development's drainage impacts. However, that, that review is not handled at the end of the zoning plan. But that's something that will require because again, there's more of the Development's land use is permitted in the underlying zoning district compatible with the city's land use plan or substantially similar to adjacent property. Based on the applicant's submitted information, staff, that is, substantially good argument regarding that. The next standard is that development won't endanger the public health, welfare, and safety. It's not anticipated that the development will pose any threat to the public health, welfare, and safety. And then the development's design and intent is consistent with the purpose of the regulation. I think the staff uses the primary benefit of development, accommodation of the fortress style, which can be difficult to accommodate under normal regulations, as, as well as the development's architectural. Those two things, I think, really set this apart from other types of formal consideration. So the recommendation for action on this item is approval with conditions of applications that potentially meets the standards for approval. The following conditions are recommended. The storage of hazardous chemicals or explosives prohibited. Storage of petroleum products is prohibited. The operation of spray paint equipment, table saws, lathes, compressors. Those, those things are Essentially what those conditions are, as part of this, are the standard conditions that we have passed in our regulations for many storages as part of the, the standard created. Question?
This requires a public hearing. I will open that at this time. Does anybody wish to make a statement about this application? Yes, sir. You'll come up and sign in and give us your name and address, please.
Chad Trimble, 385 East Maryland. I own all the property directly to the east of this. Portions of it, it's all, everything from the street owned. There's been lots of everything. They've talked about 107, how it looks from there, how it looks from Cardinal Lane side. Everything they've not talked about, and I asked them for this, a topographical view from my existing property. From there, it is going to look like a fortress. If they plan on making that backside level with Highway 107, it's going to be a dramatic change. To only have a 20-foot buffer with a six-foot bed, it's going to be a tremendous sized hill of dirt, which will have no place for drainage, which means all the drainage will come back to my property. None of it will be on theirs. When I originally bought this, this large parcel, the one thing that they wanted in the very beginning was that all the drainage would be on the commercial side. With them doing what they're talking about doing, all the drainage now comes on my side because they're eliminating everything except their 20-foot or 26-foot wall of dirt to build this building on. From my perspective on my property, looking toward 107, this building's going to be probably in the neighborhood of about 30-plus feet tall. Just they mentioned the 12-foot tall building. If they bring it up level in certain areas, I know it's going to step down and it comes back toward Maryland. From portions of this, it's going to be extremely high and it's going to really look like a fortress. The detention pond that they're mentioning, I mean, that's entirely up to you guys as far as engineers go. There's already drainage issues that we've had continuously. I've lived in Sherwood since 85. And I've been a property owner and a homeowner since 85. And we have drainage issues in this, in this entire area and we have had since day one. And I'm all for progress. Sherwood always have been. I just see a huge environmental impact on this that may be overlooked. Y'all may have different plans than I have. I haven't seen the whole thing, nor have I seen the topographical view. From 107, it looks great. From the little artist rendering, it looks great, but that's if it's on flatland. This is not going on flatland. There's a tremendous drop from 107 back to the back edge of their property. And like say 25, 26 feet to me is not, I don't believe is an adequate build line with the drainage issue back there. And that's all I can say about it.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Comments from the public?
I will call the public here and close.
Yeah, I'm concerned about where the water's going to drain to, to. Really too, what I'm thinking right now is I'd like to see some topographic maps. Cuts as to which way the water's going to run and how, how big the drop off is going to be on the east side. Of course, that would require laying this hill next month for them to work that stuff up. Right now, I'm a little, I would not rush it, proving this.
Richard, I noticed there is some construction has been going on on East Maryland. Looks like some of that involves drainage. What's going on there?
East Maryland utilities are being relocated at this time to accommodate the widening of East Maryland. And there are improvements coming with those changes, improvements to drainage. There are changes to the drainage, but by design, there won't be any negative impacts by design to anything that exists today. And our goal would be to actually make things better with this opportunity to move design for drainage or for any other particular engineering aspect of this, of this application. Do you want to include engineering approvals in your PUD approval? Or do you want to approve the PUD with the understanding that in any case, all of those requirements for drainage and for traffic calculations, parking, and all these sorts of things will have to come through my office anyway and be approved. And any impacts to any adjacent lands will have to be considered at that time. And we certainly want to state the obvious, which is we don't approve things that make things worse for other people.
My understanding that before the foundation could be poured, there'd have to be a permit for the drainage plan and potentially for, for the grading.
A site plan is the site plan, but then the design of the drainage and the drainage plan, the stormwater, the sheets that go with this set of, of plans, those are all additional things that need to be done. Now, like I said, this is certainly something you can, you can insist on if you want those to be submitted at this time with it. But that will put more work into, more work on the engineers and will put more cost into this on behalf of the developer prior to getting his approval on the PUD. So it's, it's, it's a risk. It's an additional risk.
My general understanding is that the, the purpose of the zoning plan is to get an understanding of the layout and the use as opposed to the more detailed engineering work. Is that correct?
Yeah, the, the way that the process works is the approval of the zoning plan locks in for the vesting of the, the property rights to develop based on the site plan. And then following that, the applicant is sort of tasked with do your engineering design, make the utility plans, make the drainage plans. And then those are really bystanders.
Has the applicant done any look at the drainage issue? Because that's been brought up several times.
Mayor Davidson with half plus marler. Yes, sir. We have done some preliminary drainage work. We met with Mr. Penn on a couple of occasions regarding it. Right now, and what that's produced is, is our understanding that there's going to have to be some underground stormwater detention on the east side of this property. And that work hasn't progressed to sizing that detention yet. That would become, that would come with the full engineering design. But we've done a topographic survey and, and done a preliminary evaluation of the site just to, so that we could, you know, prepare Mr. Hall and storage space for the fact that this is going to require some stormwater detention.
Did you say underwater?
Underground. If I said underwater, I misspoke. Underground. Also, I would like to note, and as part of this PUD, PUD process, you know, it's a two-step process. So the next step after zoning approval is the final development plan. And within those PUD guidelines, there's a few things listed that are required. One of those being drainage design submitted to the city. And if that design, if Mr. Penn doesn't approve that, then this zoning plan is, is void, that was approved is voided. It's no longer approved if we don't meet those drainage requirements. And, and that's an extra level of protection for the city that even if tonight you approve the zoning plan, if we don't meet the requirements of Sherwood Engineering, then this approval is voided. So there's an extra level of protection there for the city with this PUD process that's not there with some of the other means of, of getting things approved.
Do you have any questions of the engineer? Sounds good.
Some time procedurally. We talked about, Richard and I were just discussing about this, that James had said correctly that it, the site could be developed as conditional use based upon the coordinates that changed them. In my mind, I see a PUD as a separate animal in the conditional use. It's still something that has to be approved at council level, I'm assuming. But it, it's not in and of itself a conditional use. It's different. So that being said, what goes to council? The entire package now with the understanding that it has to meet staff approval?
The zoning plan, if it's approved by the planning commission, would go to the council for approval. That would be the final approval because in effect it is a rezon.
Okay.
And the basic difference between the conditional use and a planned unit development is the planned unit development has a higher standard than a conditional use. There has to be offsetting public benefits to justify any deviation from the normal regulatory requirements of, of a C3 lot. So the, the question here was, is, is giving permission to have higher density would get some public benefits as a result that we wouldn't have gotten it with a conditional use? Is that correct, James? This is Chairman. I know I'm new. I'm very new to all of this. But what does all this talk you're doing go to except this gentleman that made the request? Can you put it in simple language that I would understand as a layperson, just like this guy back here? He has issues. What are we talking about here that will solve some of those issues? Mainly water. Where's it going? And then of course I can understand too, the fortress type between this and his property.
First, on the issue of stormwater. I think even undeveloped, there's been some issues at, at Maryland Avenue there with storm drainage. And, and those are being improved right now, obviously, with some of the work that's being done there. But whereas right now this site slopes to the east towards the gentleman that spoke earlier, and when it's developed, it, it will also slope to the east. But the difference is, oh, there'll be stormwater detention in place after our construction that isn't there now. And stormwater detention, you know, as you know, it slows down the process of, I mean, it doesn't decrease the amount of rain that falls, but it captures that and stores it for a time. And the outlet pipe that leaves that storage basin releases less water after the construction than is currently released at this time with, with no improvements there. So the water that falls on our site is captured and released at a slower rate because of the reduced pipe size than it, than it's released from the site right now by just sheet falling off the site to the east.
In, in kind of layman's terms, what is proved by the city engineer can render this no worse than what it has experienced with that development. The development cannot cause an increased problem with flooding. There's, in terms of overwhelming and size and fortress-like, we approve it and he's going to live with that.
Since this site does abut East Maryland and there is improved drainage and new drainage going in on East Maryland as a result of the widening of, of the, of the street, which is, that, that's all underway. We, we don't have a, a deadline for it to be completed, but it's underway. A general rule that I am acquainted with, that I believe applies anywhere is stormwater comes onto a piece of property and stormwater leaves a piece of property. So when you look at that property for the purpose of development, wherever So when you look at that property for the purpose of development, wherever the water came onto the property before the development should be the same place. Wherever the water leaves the property after the development should be the same place as it did before. The biggest issue is the rate of water released, to be sure that there's not a higher volume of water flooding them for a very short period of time. And with this property abutting East Maryland and with, I see no other way than for a lot of this to be accomplished underground. For that to happen, I don't see why we can't include some provisions for more of the water to be released nearer to the street than it was, which would in effect, at the end of the project, be removing some of the water that runs onto the property to the east. Now, you can't always apply that because the guy to the east might want the water for his lawn, for his, you know, if he had hay, if he had a garden. So we can't be too crazy with this stuff. We've got to be pretty close to predevelopments' conditions, being very close to the post-development conditions and in favor of the neighbors that...
Do you know off the top of your head what the difference in elevation is between on-site and the low point to the east?
I don't know offhand and hate to give you misinformation.
Going by your drawing, it's the third one that was in the PDF, given the elevations on his iron pin at the very northeast corner is 422, and the very southeast corner is 398, 24 feet of fall north to south on that east side.
Right, and then west to east?
Have you done any preliminary engineering to kind of determine what the finished floor elevations are going to be of building D E and F?
No, we haven't set those yet. Just enough to know that those will be stepped down from west to east.
It looks like this is split zoning on several lots. Is that an issue?
You're talking about split zone down to the south?
There's a C1 to the southeast, and it looks like it's cutting into an R2 up there. Whatever it is, it's a residential zone. Is splitting those zoning on properties going to be a problem?
No.
Are there any other questions?
Is this, you know, this doesn't have to do with the rezoning. Is this the same exact project that was declined a few months ago?
It's my understanding it's not exactly the same. But what were the differences between what was submitted a year ago and this?
Most of the change has been addressing the comments from planning staff and then updating the plan to meet those more stringent requirements that are set in the PUD, such as the architectural fencing and the list of pasas that are acceptable under a PUD. So revising that plan to meet these more stringent requirements of the PUD than what we submitted previously.
So basically, the issue facing us is whether we believe it could be permitted conditionally because it's in C3, least in the area that's currently zoned C3. So the question before us, is there enough public benefit and advantage to make this a legitimate and valuable PUD as opposed to a conditional use? And is that what we want to send to the council? And it's important because, yeah, this is a bell cow for us.
The structure on 107, as you look at it, sir, would that be the ephesus? What would that be along there? What would it look like?
Probably about there.
The front of the building, as you go on, I fail the picture, looks pretty cool. What's it going to be in 10 years when I'm gone?
Well, everything on the front is supposed to be basinary. Now, on the top of that cap, we normally do a metal cap across the top, and it'll turn back down to regular slopes.
Sopes in?
Yeah.
When you say, "Basinry," you're talking brick?
Yeah. They may use a little bit of ephesus around the trimmers like that. Brick's there forever.
Yeah.
We like brick and we like concrete, right?
I know that. Like I say, 10 years from now, I'll be dead and gone. But this is for the future.
You need to be more optimistic than that.
I was going to say 10 years, go on.
I'm a realist, and I moved to this community because I thought it was a growing, vibrant community and a pretty community. And this lot has, to me, has been a store since I've been here. And I've seen a lot of work done over there to it. Don't know who's responsible, but I also feel for this gentleman back here. We're sending most of down here on property zones since 1985. This...
My only observation is that in my mind, this is a better-looking proposal than the one we saw a year ago.
Yeah.
And to the extent that engineering will take care of the drainage problem and protect properties on either side of that property, then this is not a bad deal. No. Thank you.
So the buildings, building walls will be brick with solder courses. The areas that stick out, the offsets, those will be basically stucco ephesus with wheels. But that's going to be, it's got some coursing lines in there, some vertical lines, but it's going to have a different looking material. So those will stand out, look like storefronts compared to the brick wall behind. The molding on top will be ephesus with a metal cap. The window assemblies will be aluminum with tinette, low-e glass. And then the canopy, there'll be canopies that sort of also convey that storefront appearance on those, which will be a steel-free prefab canopies. And then the fence and the gate will be wrought iron. So those are kind of the materials.
What's the maximum height of the tallest structure there?
Oh, I really don't know. I'm not a big...
It's true.
15 feet 20, you're talking about the top of the tower? Probably about that. The buildings themselves on the front are probably, that's probably about a foot. Along the back, those buildings, any other type of commercial development, you know, you're going to have a 20-foot wall back on top.
So building B is going to be 20 feet tall and building A is 20 foot tall?
Building A is only that tall at the entrance where we have this sort of appears like a tower, like it appears to be a two-story segment here.
Yeah.
But the entirety of the building is not that tall. That's the office area at the entrance.
Are there any other questions?
Mr. Middleton, let me state again, just for the record, there's always a larger rain event. It can always rain harder than it did. It can always rain harder than the design calculations take into account. We cannot prevent flooding. We cannot guarantee that there won't be a big rainfall. That's not our decision. However, for any given rain event, the impact of the development should be less than it would have been without the development.
So that is what you will review for?
That is what I will review, yes, sir.
I know what you're talking about. I've been through 200-year rainfalls and two floodings of a home. That's why I know in less than five years, though, exactly.
Are you ready for a motion?
Ready to take action?
Motion, we approve the PUD based on the conditions stated in the staff report.
We have a motion and a second call. Roll.
Aye.
Aye.
No. Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Transmitted to the council for their consideration.
Not sure, quite sure how, if you want to go with this. What all I have brought to you all tonight is sort of a redraft of the small cell regulations that we have looked at previously. This is following the FCC order that came out. We do need to take action by January on these. But the main thing, I think the big things that would be changes as a result of this is, and that probably sort of starts a larger discussion, is that as part of this, there would be a change to the subdivision regulations that would require underground utilities for residential in a reasonable effort to locate utilities at the rear of the lot for commercial. That would apply for redevelopment, redevelopments. That would allow us to require the deployment of essentially stealth technology for most small cell towers. That's kind of the kicker with that, with the stealth technology, that essentially means that employing things that make it less visually stand out within the ride. One of the things that we have to think about in terms of looking at this is, as we currently see it, we're talking about AT&amp;T and Verizon are most likely going to be our big investors that come in and do this. This is a technology that we want because this is going to create a competition in the marketplace. So there'll be people to compete against Comcast. There'll be people that are able to compete against our traditional telecommunication broadband providers. What that also means is that long-term, there's probably going to be some desire among other competitors to come into the marketplace as well and bring the same type of technology. So while we're looking at three to four different providers that are wanting, might want to put small cell facilities in, it could be five to 10, you know, over time. And so when you're talking about building out a network that significant, that's something that we, you know, you don't want to let get away from in terms of looking. But this is substantially similar to what we have had previously. There's some things that we removed due to the FCC order. There's some things in terms of decision-making that we remove, streamlined, things like, for instance, not... We changed that to where we said that we might require separate permits to be submitted if some of the ones that are submitted aren't substantially similar to the other ones that are in that same package. One of the big things coming out of the FCC order is the shot clock requirement, I think it's essentially 90 or 120 days from the time that you begin speaking with the telecom of approval or denial with that. So as part of that, we need to make sure that we have a process that accommodates. In this, we don't specifically have that shot clock defined in here, but we do have a timeline that is consistent with it. One of the reasons why I don't necessarily, I was advised not to put a shot clock, put that shot clock in there, is because we need to just, as staff, be aware of that, of when those things happen, so that if we put it in our regulations, they can't just necessarily throw it at us and say, "You're not complying." It would require something else on their behalf to make that argument.
By shot clock, are you talking about that provision that said if it wasn't approved within 90 days for a new facility, it was deemed approved?
Yes.
I didn't like that.
It's, yeah, well, I mean, it's not from the time of application, it's the time that you start talking.
Really?
Yes.
It's a change from the original draft?
That is based upon my discussions in that presentation that Elliot Ritchie and Tom Klock brought in.
Well, I appreciate the sentiment that they're putting forward. I mean, we don't want to kill something by inaction. We need to act one way or another. And surely, to goodness, the 90 days on a new tower is going to be adequate, even if we go the conditional use route. Do you take that out?
I'm sorry?
The original draft said that it was permitted by right in all zoning districts except R1.
That's taken out.
So R1?
R1 would be allowed by right. The flip on that is requiring the underground utilities for residential means that stealth, it has to be deployed in stealth. So because of what is, what essentially is the, how you treat the telecom is the way that you have to treat utilities. So if we're telling the utilities, you have to put it underground, then we're telling the telecom, basically, you have to make it as inobtrusive as possible as part of the process.
Are we requiring underground?
That would be a change as part of this. There would be a change to the zoning code and there would be a change to...
Most developers, obviously, underground industry.
Yeah, that's why I don't, I wanted to make sure that that was clear, but I knew that that was pretty much standard practice. If you get to a point where industry is doing something themselves, it's a lot less painful to add that recommendation.
Well, we probably need a little time to study this ourselves, but the question, I'm going to back up a second. The FCC ruling goes final on January 14th. Anybody that does not have regulations covering that may have a grace period for a little while to bring their regulations into conformance with the FCC rules. But the more we wait, the more at-risk we are of them doing whatever they want to as opposed to meeting whatever standards we think are appropriate. So the question is, should we get this ball rolling so that we have some regulations in place in January? And that would mean that we'd need to hold a public hearing next month and get it to the council the next week because they've changed the council date. So the question is, are we ready to schedule a public hearing for next meeting?
Think so, too.
Okay. We will have, you will schedule a public hearing for the next meeting? And make sure everybody knows about it. I figure we'll get some comments.
All right.
Thank you. On another subject...
quite easily, mistakes can be corrected very easily.
We made the basic decision that we had discussed here was that people are more likely to pay attention to something the council's looking at than what the, the highly important planning commission has been looking at. And so giving the public a little extra time to look at it, if the council hadn't heard any comments or complaints on this map as of the time of the next meeting, they may well have second, third reading. But we wanted to make sure that citizens have an opportunity to comment if they choose to. And my goal is to have it effective by January anyway. If we can have it sooner, that would be great. And I wanted to, to make sure you are aware of something that Metro Plan put on, has on our webpage now. Um, the map that's up there is on our webpage and it shows both the current zoning configuration and the proposed zoning. And you can look at them, one turned on, other turned off, both of them turned on with or without the aerial underneath them, and it really helps you see what's going on.
Very well done. I think, yeah, one area, this is my pet area, Pet P, right here. But this is, this is the draft proposal, which you can tell, uh, the, the zoning follows the center line, follows the property lines here. In the previous iteration that was, that was done prior to this being developed, uh, we've got this. So this, this poor little guy right here, his, he sleeps, he's sleeping in, uh, R3 and he's waking up in R1, going to the bathroom in R1. So probably just didn't know what to do. But it's very much, uh, nicer, you can tell that these have really been drilled down to the, the geography. And you can actually expand and look at a larger map and look at this in relationship to some of Pageus' base maps, uh, and see, okay, here's my property boundaries, here's where my house is. Um, so this, you know, eventually this is going to get to a point where, uh, it's going to provide a great deal more information, uh, for individuals to really be able to understand and assess, uh, where, what, how they're zoned, uh, are they meeting setbacks? Because these things will be able to be measured, uh, in a way that I think it's, will provide a lot of value, uh, hopefully reduce, uh, you know, questions that staff get regard, regarding zoning for individuals' property, uh, make things a lot quicker.
I was surprised during the course of all this about, there was three or four rezones that had never made it to the map for some reason or another. And if we didn't do anything else but to bring the map current, that was a good thing. That is all I have. Is there any new business?
I got one thing. I'd like to put them on, an item on the agenda for next month to discuss the double 20-foot setback or fences on corner lots. And, uh, swing down and in, I'd like all the members to drive through Pembroke Drive, Windchime to Coolhurst and look at the fences. Uh, so that's, you can drive that street and take a look at what's going on, think about whether you like it or not. One of those streets again, Pembroke Drive from Windchime to Coolhurst. That's, that's kind of a major thoroughfare if you're up here and you're trying to go out to, uh, academy sports area.
What they did is replace an existing privacy fence with a new privacy fence.
This, what we're talking about?
Pardon me?
Is this one?
That's, yeah. That's...
Okay.
The one on the left there. That's a brand-new fence built about a month ago.
The one on the right looks new.
Or just be old. Oh, this is, this is, I'm sorry, this is, this is 2013.
Okay.
Yeah. But just for reference.
It's looking nowhere.
Okay, we'll get it on the agenda for a discussion. Is there anything else? Have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All roll.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Call the meeting of the Sherwood Board of Zoning Adjustment, November 13th, to order. Roll call.
Martin?
Here.
Middleton?
Aye, here.
Bruno?
Here.
Dylan?
Here.
Knight?
Uh, you have seen the minutes of the October meeting. Are there any corrections or additions?
Motion to approve.
So moved.
That's a second.
Beat you.
Oh, okay, whatever. I didn't hear you.
Sorry.
Martin?
Aye.
Aye.
Bruno?
Aye.
Dylan?
Aye.
Yes. The agenda is short and sweet, the first one since I have been here that didn't have any other business on it. Is there any new or old business?
Motion to adjourn.